All right, good evening, everyone. I called this meeting to order. Today is February 25, 2025, and it's 7:07 with the clerk called the Rosepris.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Rafai.
President.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Sidman.
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan is not present. Mr. Mayor, we have a call on the 7:07.
Thank you. Please rise for the position.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, with his whole liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Starting for Ramadan, I want to remind everyone that the meetings will take place at 6:00 PM rather than 7:00 PM. The business license renewals have went out, or will go out here very shortly. The Poochiki Run is coming up on the first, for those of you that have not registered. And there will be a city-owned property auction coming up as well. It will be widely posted on various mediums. Additionally, I just want to mention that a community member has recently passed away, a former resident of Hamtramck, Andy Rice. I just wanted to offer personally my condolences for his family and friends. You may have seen it all over Facebook. He used to live here. Doesn't live here anymore, but still is very connected to the community. I'm very sorry to hear about it.
Thank you. We move into proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. We have first proclamation honoring the life of John Mijewski. We all send our condolences to the family of the former mayor. That's her brother, right?
Yep, that's correct.
The next item is 2025 work of the Kniff Reconstruction Project. Do you have a presentation for that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have Charles here and Tiffany from NSC to present on it. Basically, we're getting ready to start the next phase of Kniff. And there were some issues over whether we closed. Did it close? And they're here to weigh out the pros and cons of doing so.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us today. We are in the process of starting... You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're in the process of starting the second phase of Kniff, which is primarily east of Gallagher down to Conant Street. And so we wanted to offer you two options. We've talked to the contractor. As I've stated before, with the first phase, our problem was, and I know we wanted to keep one lane open, but with the MDOT regulations and safety protocol, we were unable to do that. So we were trying to set this up so that we may be able to do it. So, and I've given all of your brochure of what we've come up with. Our first option is the full closure. This option would close the entire section to traffic for the duration of construction, allowing pedestrian access on one side of the roadway and providing temporary crossing for pedestrians as needed throughout the site. This option would be completed in approximately 90 days, weather-dependent. Local traffic would utilize side streets and alleys for access. So I think the three main businesses that we have down there is the strip down at Conant on the north side of the road. And then we have the market at Sobeski on the north side of the road. And then we have the fruit market at Gallagher. So I know that the strip mall down there where the liquor store is at, they'll be fine because the clients can come in off of Conant. Same thing with the market on Sobeski. They can use Sobeski in the alley to get inside. And then the fruit market, what we'll do is create another temporary drive approach coming up Gallagher going to the north and allow them for their business to proceed. And then all the residents and other businesses can use the side streets. I think this is the best option for us for 90 days. The second option is to try to do half width. This option would reconstruct the road in half width with one lane of traffic allowed during non-working hours with no parking allowed on either side. We discussed that option in the first phase. It didn't work for us. The road fell apart and it just became unsafe. But even doing so, we're looking at a minimum of 130 days, with weather permitting. And I think that's just, you know, in my opinion, I think that's just a little bit too long. We'll lose the whole summer with this, you know. And I think we could just have bigger problems with it. But not only will constructing the project in half width and add additional time and inconvenience to the area will also create additional safety concerns to the public and the workers on the project. Having certain times, the roadway is open to vehicular traffic, creates extra confusion to motorists as they are never fully clear when to enter the work zone and when not to. So unauthorized parking would cause additional delays to the construction timeframe and potentially add additional costs to the contract if unauthorized parking hinders the construction schedule. Finally, the concerns discussed during the 2024 phase of the project from the MDOT Work Zone Safety and Mobility Manual applies to this 2025 phase of construction. So this was prepared by Troy Nutio. He was sick today, some kind of bug going around. So he was unable to come in to do this presentation for you. The second page of this that you have is from our contractor, Mark Anthony. And it kind of states everything that I went over. So we did meet with them and we did have this discussion with them. And, you know, we just kind of took this and kind of laid it out so you guys can kind of review it and come up with a decision for it. The third phrase is actually the contract schedule. So the first schedule shows a starting back roughly around April 10, 2025, with traffic control, getting sedimentation controls in place, and starting pavement removals. And if we get this started April 10, weather permitting, we'll have this done by July 15, which gives us most of July, August, September. So we'll get most of the summer in for that. But if you look at the next schedule for the half width closures, we'll be starting at the same time, April 10, but completion date, weather permitting, will be closer to the middle of August, which will lose the whole summer on that. So, you know, we wanted to present this to you and kind of get your feedback on it. I recommend that we go with the full width so we can get in there, get all the storm sewer and everything done, and get the project over, get the city Kniff back as quickly as possible.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think the choice is pretty obvious on this. I mean, we save a significant amount of time, headache, money, and overall just get it done fast with the 90-day solution. I have watched Council kind of nodding along in this. And I believe unless there's, you know, significant pushback from Council, which I don't believe there is, and Council wants to do with the resolution, we're going to go with the 90 days. Unless I'm completely wrong and Council really wants to do the 130-day half closure.
Well, if we have, you know, if we can say 40 days, you know, between first option and second option, as long as they provide some entrances to the main businesses, like Al-Harman and other ones, like you stated, and keep the sidewalk clear for, you know, people to walk to the other businesses, I think that would be an acceptable option.
Yeah. And that's the same thing we did with Phase 1. We made sure that we got the pedestrians across the road safely. We did our best to make sure all the businesses and the schools continue to function at full capacity, you know, with a few delays here and there. But I think this process, getting this out the way in 90 days, weather permitting, is the best option for us so we can just get off the road and give it back to the city.
Even when we were pouring sidewalks, they were like, for necessary businesses, they were creating ramps over the sidewalks when they were wet. So there's always that option too. But other than those two main markets and the little strip mall, it's fairly light over there, I would say.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. I know I was promoting to have half-open, half-close, correct? So, and I did talk to some of these, especially those businesses that you spoke to, those three main businesses. And the main business that might have effect of having traffic is actually the full market. Now, if you have that plan of opening a driveway on that side of Gallagher, I think that will solve the whole thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And then I will agree with the mayor. If we're able to do it in three months and being done with it, it's been taking a longer time.
Yes.
So me personally, with the full closure, like you said, both businesses, all the two businesses, they have their ways in and out. They're just the full market.
Yeah, we'll make sure that...
And I'm glad that you were able to...
Yeah, we'll put a temporary ramp in for them.
And they just redid their lot too, so...
I know. They have a whole lot of room. Nothing much.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, actually, for doing both options, 90 days is a much better option. And please keep the... He told us you may get special access for the Al-Harman and other businesses. It is... And let's do it.
Okay.
And please don't delay.
No, no. We want to start April 10. If not earlier, if we get this pushed and you guys tell us to go, then we'll have another meeting with the contractor. If I can get it started earlier, I will. But we're looking at April 10 as of right now. With the frost laws getting ready to come on, we really want to get these trucks out there and get going. Because if they hit us with the frost laws, that's going to slow us down, so...
We got a lot of construction planned for this summer, so we got to pack that up.
Yeah, we got to get this done. Okay?
Mr. Chair, one more thing, and that goes to the city manager. I know they're going to be using the alleys. If we're able to sweep those alleys and there's hot holes, because they're going to use alleys, correct? So nobody's going to drive there, it's a lot of tunnels. Especially those two alleys, it's crazy. So if we're able to maintain where they're drivable and also it's clean, and then, you know, so we don't get calls.
Well, I know the alleys on the north side, between Conant up to Gallagher are accessible. But that alley on the south side, between Gallagher behind the fruit market with that dumpster they have back there, that alley is kind of deplorable right now. And you can't get traffic through there because you got a T at the end on the north... I mean, the east end of it is a T right there. So you can't really get traffic in there. So that's why we're going to use the side streets for those businesses, other than the fruit market, to park on that side and get the pedestrians and the businesses back and forth across that way. So we'll be using Sobeski, Moran, and those streets for parking. And then we got to take into consideration all of the east-west side from Gallagher is open now. So we got ample amount of parking down there and everybody just have to do a little bit of walking, so...
Don't forget, Conant, there are still residents that do live. Maybe some of them will park in the alley.
That's what I was going to say, the parking issue.
So make sure...
We were out-patching today, taking advantage of the good weather, by the way. But just, Charles, just before we start, take a ride through there and make sure there isn't any... We can send them over pretty quick, so...
Yeah, we'll take a look at it and make sure it's safe.
And then make sure our PD doesn't write any tickets to anybody that parks. Also, if they're not blocking the alley, if they're parked on the side, it's fine. Where is they going to park?
Yeah. We're kind of doing that at Gudson right now on that Gudson project that we got to 1B Relief Sewer down at the south end. And it's working out pretty good. We're using the alley as a thoroughway for the residents and they're using their backyards and driveways to park. And it's working out pretty good for... I haven't had too many complaints, but I think it's working out well for us, so...
Well, that's a brand-new alley.
Yeah, yeah.
So if all goes well, if you remember, some of those alleys just north of Kniff are on the next plan as well. So residents will significantly appreciate that, to have brand-new Kniff. And then hopefully, if all goes well, we need a summer brand-new alley.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
All right, the next one is the presentation for the DDA. You have Mike on here, the chair of the DDA.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Council. Do we have a presentation?
Yes. I forgot my little remote control thing downstairs. But, so you just got to tell me next and I'll just next it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, hold on, I'm opening it up.
Okay. We'll pause for a second. Where's that?
The desk.
What, were you meaning for it?
Yeah, yeah.
What is it? I got to get in there and put this in place.
You don't want my desk?
Yeah.
The first desk, the first top drawer, right? It's in a box.
Okay, tap her on the right.
Two things in boxes. It's going to be remote or something else. You can get it.
Okay, great. So as the mayor said, I'm Milo Madola. I'm the chair of the Hamtramck DDA. And we're here to present our 2024 annual report to you all and hopefully give you some interesting tips and tidbits and numbers that can tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. So first off, before we get into the presentation, I do have a quick summary of our report that I wanted to deliver. And it really harks back, I guess, to last year when we stood here and gave you our 2023 annual report. And we described to you the determination of the Hamtramck DDA really to restore itself to a more active impactful resource for our downtown and for our small business community. And today, I feel pretty good about our progress on that goal. By bringing in an interim executive director and leveraging all available resources, in 2024, we saw really explosive growth in our refreshed branding campaign, which is downtown Hamtramck. I know you guys have probably seen a lot of that around town and on social media. And that's really become a valuable online advertising mechanism for local businesses and a megaphone for the city as a whole. At the same time, we put a lot of our very small budget into beautifying the downtown, rolling out the attractive new marketing banners that you now see lining the street, and putting up holiday lights on Joseph Tompo in partnership with the Hamtramck Parks Conservancy. And we also handed out business maps and flyers that we designed with the city, distributed those to merchants, and had visitors, you know, had the opportunity to get those at soccer games, DCFC games, and other things like that, getting out the word about Hamtramck to whoever would listen. And I do think all this promotion really has had some real value. In 2024, we saw many new businesses opening. And we saw a stabilizing number of vacancies, which I think is really critical. And also, at the end of the year, we had the phenomenal success of the Hamtramck Night Bazaar, which was established in September, I think, by the DDA and city staff. We saw over 1,500 attendees at those first two events that we held on the Market Days. So going into the future, into 2025, I think the future of downtown Hamtramck and the DDA looks bright. But I will say there's also reasons for some caution and concern. All of the DDA's work was accomplished on a shoestring budget of less than $30,000, which is raised by a funding mechanism that is really intended only to finance the administrative costs of running a downtown development authority. So if we're to continue and expand the valuable services and benefits that are being provided to the community, I think finding and identifying additional sources of funding will be critical. A thriving community requires a thriving downtown and a thriving small business community. And what we're really proud of, what happened in 2024, there's a lot more to do if we have the resources to do it. So with that, I guess, can we jump into...
Yeah, are we turning on?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't going through the slides.
Don't worry about it, I wasn't sure. But here, I got this now, so we are entirely fully...
Perfect. So I can just click that?
Yes, absolutely. There you go. Can I test it? Perfect.
Awesome. So a couple of the initiatives this year, the holiday lighting. I hope you guys all noticed that I think it was really nice. We changed out the old snowflakes. They were really falling apart and put lights on every single pole. Snow removal, we continued to fund snow removal. It sounds like we might be changing up that arrangement, but we've continued to fund snow removal on Joseph Tompo, which I know the merchants really appreciate myself being one of them. Banner installation, we already talked about that. We put 160 new banners up to replace the old and sort of decaying banners. That was really expensive. It was about a $20,000 project, which is a very large portion of our budget. We worked with the Hamtramck Parks Conservancy on that. So that's that. The year in the numbers, 13 new businesses opened in 2024, which compares to 14 in 2023. It's not on there, but we held steady with vacancies. So we had seven storefronts become vacant. We had seven vacant storefronts filled. I would like to see those numbers go up, but feeling good about that. And I'm feeling also very good about the fact that we're finally measuring this. This isn't something that was measured before 2023 so we can actually tell you what's going on. Social media was a really, really bright spot for us. We had 470 Instagram followers for the downtown Hamtramck campaign in 2023. That grew to 11,000 in 2024. And I can tell you that that's done wonders for my business and for many other people's businesses. Same with Facebook. The Facebook followers doubled. And overall, we reached over 2.1 million people on social media in 2024. The Night Bazaar was another huge success. Both events had about 800 attendees. There was one, I think, in September and one in December. So next year, we plan to have an increased number of Night Bazaar events. But that was a really great event for everybody. And I saw a number of you guys there, so thank you for being there. Earth Day, there was an annual sweep of over 50 volunteers who cleaned the city. And we've been expanding our New Business Alerts series, which I think has been great, as well as sponsoring events. This is just a quick look at some of the new social media... or rather, this is really not the social media. This is the banners that we put up, new branding campaign for the city and for downtown. And a look at the different sort of style that has been adapted by downtown Hamtramck for the social media. More focused on videos. And obviously, you've really seen it play out very successfully with the numbers. And here's a little bit more of that. Picture of the Night Bazaar in the top right corner. So for 2025, what are our goals? Probably our first and biggest goal is to join Michigan Main Street. That's a program that we are now at the select, or rather, we're at the engaged level, I think. And the select level is the next level. That unlocks grant funding for our businesses, which is really important. At this point, we don't have any resources to give small businesses. We would like to be able to do things like, you know, facade improvement grants, things like that that took place in the past, but we just don't have the resources. So getting to that select level of Michigan Main Street with the state is really critical. Like I said, we hope to increase the number of Night Bazaars. It's been very successful. We've really, like, almost sold out essentially. There's not been enough spaces for vendors because it's been so popular. So we're going to have five of those Night Bazaars in 2025. And of course, we want to continue to really hit the ground hard with the Discover Hamtramck campaign. And this is a list of new businesses that were opened in 2024 and a list of the board members. I think that is it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. I think in our last meeting, we talked about, you know, the importance of coordinating with the city council about some projects, including the renewal of the contract, of the parking meter contract. You know, last time, the DDA had no say. Nobody consulted them. This time, they have a lot of good ideas that they want to contribute to their subcommittee. And so we will talk about that.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next presentation is for the Arts and Culture. And that will be done by...
Tim Price and Lynn Glass.
Lynn Glassy, thank you.
Do you have the thing on, or...
Good, there you go. Try it on your remote. There you go.
We printed it for ourselves. Do we each want one? I want to show...
No, that's fine. I'll beg her down.
The mayor and city council in public. We're honored to announce that we're back again. So every year, we keep growing. So things are progressing forward. I'm going to introduce Lynn. She's going to read a couple things. And I'm going to step up and speak for the mayor.
We wanted to start by just reading our mission statement. The Arts and Culture Commission exists to foster, encourage, and amplify the artistic and cultural communities of the city of Hamtramck. Through artistic and cultural initiatives that educate, engage, and unify our diverse community, we aim to create a better quality of life for all Hamtramck residents. And one of those projects is our participation in the celebration and acknowledgement of Juneteenth. We help complement the march that happens by hosting a welcome breakfast for folks at Sarah Garrett Park, which is the location that the march originates. We decorate the park. We provide coffee, refreshments, and a welcoming space so people don't just show up to an empty park. And then we join the march that's organized separately from us. Also, in June, we support the activities of the Hamtramck Clear Alliance. This year, they marched with the... During the Motor City Pride Parade, and we just helped support that event as well. And we marched with DCFC as well in that.
Also, this year again, we were at a booth at the Labor Day Festival, which has been an ongoing thing with our commission. We are also there to represent the community. We represent all of the commissions and stuff too. But it's a good informational booth, which leads into our Neighborhood Arts Festival, which happens in October each year, that keeps growing. And we are now up to... We have over 35 events this year. And 31 different venues. We had a goal of record-setting fundraising this year. We're getting more and more businesses becoming part of it. And it's going from not only being in the neighborhoods, but again, businesses will have arts, will have activations, and things like that. It was also, we coordinated with the DDA, who's one of our sponsors. They also did the night market that night. There was a launch of it. So we kind of, it was a continuation from the Neighborhood Arts Festival into that. So it was a very successful year. The graphics are growing. We're already in works for this year's festival. We already have the artists slated and the maps. And onto that, our goal for this year is to finally launch the activation of the public art. There's a lot of public art that's been up. There's things from the, in the library to the post office that we want to actually feature and make that a deterrent attraction. And we've also worked with the servants in the alley. Things have been done, even murals and businesses. So we have a new member, as for what you brought forward, Justine, who actually has an activation in her background in doing maps. So she's going to actually create something online. And then that will actually be active for the whole city. So we're looking forward to that. Other goals is to create, work with the different departments, the CED, because we know we have some different projects through there, through arts and activation, so good. Any questions?
I think that's it.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next one is the zoning and planning presentation. And that would be done...
I spelled the steps and the rest.
This is Bob, can you leave it up? Um, yes, please. Good evening. I'm presenting this on behalf of the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board, and the Planning and Zoning Fortune of the CED Department. So we rolled this report all into one because the activities are so interconnected. And I'm going to flip to page 3 of this. So one of the main activities of the Planning Commission this year, as you're aware, is adopting several new zoning ordinance changes. This includes changes to the requirements for projecting signs in our commercial business district, LED lighting, event halls, building materials, fencing in our residential districts, as well as different parking measures. And then CED is tasked with helping implement these changes. We also have on pages four and five of this report, a project review essentially of the activities of the zoning board and the planning commission, which include any variances that were granted or denied by the zoning board. And then underneath the SOD reviews, or special land use reviews that the planning commission considers. So both evaluating and/or interpreting the ordinances. And then we've also done quite a bit of work with the zoning board, which is continuing to train the members about standards for zoning board review. And we have some new members, and we'll continue that activity in 2025. On pages six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 of this report is just a summary of all of the planning and zoning reviews that CED staff undertakes. So that happens when any building department review a plan is submitted, and we have to ensure that whatever is developed or being built is in compliance with the ordinances. And then planning and zoning goals for 2025. We believe that our really important goal is going to onboard new members to the zoning board, as I've mentioned. And then we also have some economic development strategy that's being worked out through a grant. And we want to make sure that our zoning and planning activities are coordinating well with that strategy. We'll continue ongoing reviews of the zoning map and applicable ordinances, continued training. And then the main priority for me, as well as DPS Director John DeAngelis, is to make sure that CED is coordinating as efficiently as possible with the building department. If someone wants to build something new or expand something new, a lot of the time, their first step is talking to us. And we want to expedite the process for them to submit permits and have plan reviews take place as fast as possible. So that is it for me for this one.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Most certainly.
All right. Thank you so much. There's another one?
Yep, she's up there first.
This next one is the Community and Economic Development Department report.
It's coming.
Thank you, Rhonda.
No problem.
It's not working on my end.
Yeah, so one moment. Let me just find the email that we sent it. Yeah. Okay, I got it. Nope, I got it. There you go.
Thank you. So our CED activities are divided into five different categories: supporting boards and commissions, our development support services, grant administration, special projects, and planning and zoning, which is the report that I just gave you. So we'll begin just talking about what our CED staff looks like. We have five staff members, two full-time, two part-time, and then one additional full-time member that is grant-funded only through the year 2026. And that makes up our small but mighty staff. We have five boards and commissions we provide direct administrative support to, which includes the ZBA and Planning Commission, as I've discussed, the DDA, Arts and Culture, and the Beautification Commission. And getting into more detail about our development support services, we focus a lot on zoning education, teaching people about the zoning map and what it means. We have a lot of communications with residents and property owners about this through meetings and emails and phone calls and letters, providing guidance pre-construction and pre-purchase of a lot of properties. Pre-development meetings are another really big focus for us. We really encourage people who want to begin construction projects to meet with us early and talk with us often. So we want to help residents and businesses best utilize their time and their financial resources by talking with us, with the building department and the fire department, ideally all in one meeting at the outset of the projects to make plans about any DDA or planning commission or plan review, things that we can flag at the outset of those projects. In addition, the oversee and staff the DDA initiatives, including Discover Hamtramck and the Night Bazaars, which Milo discussed earlier. The ribbon-cutting events you're also very familiar with. We provide that service for free for opening businesses in the city. And these projects mainly happen with the DDA funds and some other grant funding and our summer youth interns as much as CED is able to provide support for these projects. But the night bazaar, I hope that we will have more volunteers getting involved. It has essentially meant that I have all five members of my department in Pope Park from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. every single time that we do a bazaar event. So put out the call for volunteers. Another business support activity we engage in is writing letters of support for grant funding. So if a private developer or property owner wants to pursue extra funding, we can support that project with the grant tour. And we also administer the process for any of our special events and festivals to coordinate between city departments with that. Relationship building is a rather general header, but I put that there because it's important that we are a primary driver of building trust with our businesses and our property owners and residents alike. So this means a lot of community outreach for things like our town halls to understand resident and business concerns. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have a lot of grant administration that CED covers. The first one is our tree planting grant, which you're familiar with. We want to plant a thousand trees in the next four years, and we oversee the contractors for that project. The next one is an alleyway activation grant, which we'll talk more about later tonight. But the goal of this is to reimagine and activate a commercial alleyway space into a shared commercial and safe pedestrian and cyclist alleyway. And next, we have this Economic Recovery Strategic Planning Grant, which is helping us assess realities in Hamtramck's surroundings, supporting our businesses, elements of the master plan, and giving that full-time grant-funded person a checklist of things they can do to really improve the economic development prospects in the city. Our last one is the Summer Youth Program. And that is an annual one where we find a lot of fun and rather random projects for youth to help us with and help provide them some foundational experiences and hopefully get interested in community development and city government. There's a lot more to that. In addition to special projects that I've already mentioned, there's even more special projects. Lots of ordinance implementation. The MEZ project collaborating with code enforcement has really seen an uptick lately. All of our lot sale programs in 2024. And what I want to highlight is this collaboration with code enforcement that's gone really well lately. When you adopted the new LED lighting ordinance for our commercial districts in 2024, we began a campaign to educate business owners that would be impacted by this in the multi-use and central business district to mail them letters, make individual phone calls to business and property owners, go to order door, set up site visits with them to help them strategize about how to comply with the ordinance, all of the goal of making sure that they're informed about it before code goes out and starts enforcing it and hopefully prevent cases. So that's been really helpful, and I appreciate the help of code enforcement with that. We do all of this with a budget of about $200,000, most of which funds our staff salaries. And this does not include the approximately $30,000 in the DDA's budget. So we make the most of it, certainly. And what we want to continue to do is try to strive toward these words that are on the wall in my office, which are "fair, healthy, and vibrant", which my predecessor Carolyn, the previous director, had on the wall. I think it encapsulates the goals that we have to try to get a commercial facade grant program back for our DDA businesses, to fill vacancy, to empower boards and commissions, in particular the DDA, to keep positive community engagement efforts going, to pursue more grant funding, and also put on the successful city auction this year. So that's the conclusion of my presentation. And we're always available to talk if you have questions.
Can we just ask you a question?
Go ahead.
The operational budget that you mentioned, around $3,000, $300,000, that's from the city?
$200,000.
Received a grant of $300,000 for three years, right?
We have multiple grants coming out of that department, but there is also a general fund component as well.
So that $300,000 was to pay some employees for three years, right?
It funds the economic development sort of recovery strategic planning. So it has a contractor working with us to create a strategic plan for that.
He wants to add some.
And it also funds a full-time member of our department. So it's not reflected in that $200,000 because it's a separate grant fund.
This, this grant is a $308,000 grant, which includes, as Isabel mentioned, a contractor who's working on our strategic plan. But it also includes the salary of one of our employees for three years. So the combination of the two make up that $300,000. Otherwise, the DDA expenses are all covered through the small little mileage that they get, which is less like, you know, $24,000 or something per year, which is really not very significant to do much activity in DDA.
Well, my issue, we all want to talk about LED lights. I know we spoke about that. That needs to be addressed before any violations to these businesses. So how's that been going on?
Well, we launched that campaign in the fall, and we gave business owners and property owners a period of four months before code enforcement would begin visiting properties to see if they were complying. So we mailed out letters and began phone calls to every single business owner and property owner in December. And they have had, I think, a really positive response. Some people have said that, you know, they needed more assistance, and then I sent a staff member out to meet in person with the business owner. One thing that the DDA was able to provide was, you know, a timer, because one of the aspects of that new ordinance is restricting what time the LEDs can be illuminated. So it's not, they're not on between midnight and 8:00 a.m., right? That really crucial darkest period where people with astigmatism like me could have a problem driving. And there's also a group of business owners that haven't responded to us. And we've made multiple attempts to try to contact them. We mailed letters, and we physically delivered letters, and we called, and so.
Regarding what?
Essentially, what the businesses would need to do in order to comply with the ordinance that you adopted. So there's a few different elements to it. One is the time of day they can be illuminated. One is how bright, which you can change with a dimmer. And then the other is buffering the light. So you can install like a plastic sleeve over it.
So lately, we have improved, increasing the number of brightness from four to.
Eight.
So that's what some people wanted. And I think some people opposed that, but it passed. And it came through the city council, we approved it, too. So that, that was a concern for some of them.
We haven't really heard too much about it overall. I had a couple phone calls on it, but it's been a pretty quiet topic between CED mailing out the letters and code sending out warnings and such. And we'll.
So it hasn't sent any warnings out yet.
I thought they did. I'm sorry.
I, we, CED emailed the letters just from an educational perspective. So we haven't handed it off to code yet. That would happen in March. But we continue to collaborate with businesses to explain.
I suppose we have businesses who are complying. Are understanding making that change?
Correct. Yes. And I, I think that, I mean, quite frankly, people will take it the most seriously when they hear from code enforcement rather than hearing from CED. But what we try to do is take a new approach and say, we're showing up early to educate you, to try to help make sure that you don't get enforced them at all, because there is a way. And the letter explains the steps and how to do that.
And then after that, if it goes to code, it needs to be another warning.
There will be.
Code knows it all.
All right. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we move to the additions and additions of the agenda. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Hassan is not here to add something. All right. All right. We miss Hassan. All right. We move to my favorite part, which is the public.
I have two emails I'm going to read. One is from Jasmine Rose. Says, "Hello, I'm a citizen of Hamtramck. We do not need more surveillance. We need more support from the city. Spend our tax money on services for the disabled, elderly, and those in need. Spend our tax money on that enormous pothole left on Kniff and Gallagher. Do not spend my hard-earned money, tax money, on drones."
I also have, Ahmad, shut up. Do you want to, do you want me to read your email? Or you're here to present?
I would like you to.
You won't have time to speak, then.
Was that going to take out of my time?
Absolutely. You, you're not allowed to comment.
Is that right? Okay. Well, I'm going to bring the topic anyway then, if you want, you know. It makes.
Well, you're taking up time now. Do you want to come up and speak your three minutes? I'll start it right now.
Okay. You started, and I wanted to just read this one, if you would, please. How about this? And then read the Arabic part. Please.
What are this, question to the mayor of Hamtramck. What are the specific justifications and goals for shifting from a city manager system to a strong mayor system? Have any studies assessed the impact of the shift on services and governance? Questions on practical and legal aspects. Is there any intent to adopt aspects of historical systems, example, caliphate or religious principles in one governance? Or is the focus purely on scientific and practical improvements? What legal steps are required? Does a change depend on citizen voting? 4,700 registered to voters of the city council. How will fair representation be ensured, given the demographic makeup? Inclusivity concerns. How will challenges related to pluralism and representing the public will be managed, given the limited voter numbers? Are the motives political or based on studies for the city's benefit? We seek clear answers to ensure informed community engagement and consensus of any systematic changes.
You have a minute?
Two minutes left.
Oh, that's, that's pretty good. Okay. Well, she said it in English. I need that same record. Mr. Mayor, he posted in his official page about changing the system from the city manager system to a strong mayor, which is, I am 100% disagreeing. It's my opinion. And then I'm going to ask my question to our Arabic people. So. Please be clear. Before you go, just a quick question, and you answer with a yes or no. Do you know that the city used to be a strong mayor system? I would like to be answered and asked. Would you please use your time? You don't know, right? So. I do know. Okay. Well, thank you. Do you know when? When was it? I would like to get an answer, please. The answer that I will. You're making it sound like it's something odd and something. I'm not making it as a sound. I just need to be answered as a good citizen. Thank you. I respect your opinion. And I respect if you answer clearly. I will answer right now. You mentioned the Khilafah. As this thing never exists, the, the, most of the cities in the United States have, has, or have a strong mayor system. And so this is not something new.
At this point, only the mayor can speak. So you have to.
Yeah, you're done with your time. Thank you. So if you don't know that this is the most common system in the United States, then that's your problem, not ours. Hamtramck City used to have this system until 2005. You don't know that, so I, I don't blame you. But it's not something new for us. The charter, the charter was changed in 2005 to, to switch to this city manager system. So it's not new to Hamtramck either. Yes, it will involve putting this on the ballot for the people to vote on it. But to act like something, it's strange, and it's something new, and we don't know about that, that's because you're lack of knowledge about the history of the city. That's, yeah. Because until 2005, we had a strong mayor system. So it's not an issue. If we, if we decide to go back, yes, the people will have to vote on it. We have over 17,000 registered people to vote in, in Hamtramck. In the presidential election, we had over 7,000 who went out and voted. So I'm not, I didn't say I'm going to do it. I put a survey, asking the people about their opinion. And I respect their opinion. They said, maybe, maybe it will be good for now that someone can handle this. But in the future, maybe some people will come, and it's going to be a problem if they don't have the qualifications. So it was just a survey. And by the way, I, some people assumed that I have a problem with the city manager. No, I discussed that with him before, prior. So he knows about that survey. And I just wanted to see how people would react and how, if this is a possible thing. Would I go ahead and implement it? I'm just doing somebody, this is part of the research. Doing a survey, asking people about their opinion is part of the research. And I appreciate that you did a lot of efforts, and you posted something, a lot of details about this. That's something that we would like. That's something that we would like our people to get engaged and to research things and to educate other people. So I appreciate that long post that you put. You put a lot of efforts in that. That's something we want our citizens and residents to get involved in and to engage. So maybe that post was good for people to make some research and to educate themselves about the difference between the system. The reason I run for mayor here is because it was, you know, city manager system that will keep me working in the healthcare field and serve people in both sides. If I had to quit my job as a healthcare professional, I wasn't going to run for mayor, to be honest with you. So this is, it has positives and negatives. And I, the survey, you know, some of my best friends disagree with me and post, and wrote some good comments about it, and I take that into consideration. So I appreciate your opinion. And, you know, there's a process that we go through to get it on the ballot for the people. Would I be doing it soon? No, I'm just researching and actually asking people about their thing. So thank you so much.
Yes, was there a study, sir?
I'm sorry. No, no, I'm sorry.
Study what? I mean, it's not something new, you would do it for the first time. It's common in other cities. There were, you tried, other cities next to you, they are using the same system. So you're going to follow the process or go back to prior to 2005. This is not a new scientific innovation that we are coming up with. It's something common. Go ahead.
Thank you, Lynn Blazey.
Hello, mayor and council. First of all, I would like to give a shout out to Hamtramck Mutual Aid and Code Enforcement for their awesome collaborations in snow removal during these insane like snowstorms we've had lately. Thanks to their collaboration, our seniors and disabled residents have been able to navigate our streets and sidewalks. And that's really important, that the community comes together with the city like that. I'd also like to thank the Public Works Department for filling the potholes along the Puchikiran route today and getting out there as soon as snow is out of the way to start getting our roads at least usable till we can resurface all of them. Getting to the agenda items. I would like to say that Resolution 2516 with the alley activation project, this is something I've been very excited about for a long time. So I'm really looking forward to, you know, making sure that our alleys are usable and very pedestrian friendly. I'm also with Resolution 202517, very excited about finally moving forward on restrooms. I know it's taken a lot of years to gather the funds for this big project. And to see that we're going to get some construction contracts started, that's really exciting. Regarding Resolution 202519, I am not in support of adding drones to the police force. In the presentation that the police gave a last, in the last meeting, they already have drones. I feel like this is a, not a good use of funds. I don't think that we need to be surveilling residents. This is a two and a half square mile city. And if we already have, you know, just at least one drone, we're a small city. We don't need the police being able to look into our backyards and all of that stuff. Resolution 202521, I'm really excited to see more city property getting turned over to the hands of residents. That's going to do a lot towards increasing our revenue. As those lots get developed, we will get, we'll collect more in property taxes. And finally, I just want to wish everybody Ramadan Barak, which starts the end of this week. A happy Puchikiran Day and a blessed month. Everybody should celebrate this, thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question to the deputy. Do we have any drones now?
No, we do not.
Because she mentioned we have one. I don't know, I don't think we have any at this time.
Right, we do not.
Next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, Deputy Chief, City Clerk. I just want to wish everyone Ramadan Barak and Ramadan Karim to the council, mayor, and everyone that celebrates it, including the citizens. And Mr. Mayor, for the record, Hassan and Ibrahim are not running for mayor. Will always support you, hopefully for the next two terms. God bless you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kamal Rahman.
Honorable counsel and the mayor and everyone else. I come as, well, Kamal on 1/30/50 Kniff, I think I had to mention that. I come as a trustee of Wayne County Community College. As you know, Wayne County Community College has seven campuses and we have 200 plus different programs. I just want to share this with the community. And we have more than 70,000 full-time, part-time students. We also have collaboration with, we are testing something called dual enrollment, where students will learn, take classes, college courses while they're in high school. And when they graduate, they also graduate with an associate's degree. And they also participate when we do our graduation at usually Ford Field for the last 10 years. We also offer many programs and courses and technical courses that are, you know, we urge people to take advantage of. Sometime, we bring these courses and special programs to the neighborhoods. Like we just brought one to Moatman Jabal Community Imam Islamic Complex, the old OIA building. So we are offering their sewing classes and bilingual classes. And bilingual teachers will be available. So please take advantage of those classes. And they're free, they're absolutely free. Two days a week, Monday, Wednesday, and, you know, three hours. And they will be offered through the, through the month of Ramadan. So again, Ramadan Karim, and we urge everyone to, you know, get the word out and let everybody know that they exist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more email, Public Comment. The email is from Abdul Wahid, but it's signed AW Asala Shushadi. Dear Hamtramck City Council, I'm writing to express my serious concern regarding the residency status of Councilman Khalil Rafai, who is currently serving our community while residing on Oliver Street in Detroit. It has come to my attention that it is a violation of the principle that elected officials should reside in the areas they represent. It is imperative that our city leaders live within the community. They serve as this fosters accountability and a stronger connection to the issues faced by the residents. Mr. Rafai's decision to live outside of Hamtramck raises a question about his commitment to our city and its citizens. I urge the council to address the issue promptly. Setting a clear precedent on the requirement of residency for elected officials is essential for maintaining integrity and trust in our local government. Immediate action must be taken to rectify this situation and ensure that our representatives are fully invested in the community they serve. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I look forward to seeing the council take appropriate steps regarding this issue. And that's all for Public Comment.
Thank you. All right, so we move now to the consent agenda. This is approved with a single motion with no discussion. We have A, approval of minutes from January 28, 2025, regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoiced register date ending February 25, 2025. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending February 25, 2025. Resolution 2025-14, approving street closure from Puchikiran. A, Resolution 2025-15, approving fiscal year to 2025-26 budget calendar. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections? All right. With that, we move to the new business, and we have the first resolution, 2025-16, approving project prime bid award, alleyway activation project.
Motion.
Second. Mr. Mayor, Isabel, we talked about this. Your chair is here.
Good evening again. This is the first of two positions funded by our Alleyway Activation Grant that's funded through the DNR. And what this position is, is called a Project Prime. That's grant language for essentially a program coordinator for us and designer to handle all community engagement with businesses who've ordered the alleyway and residents close by, as well as creating plans and engineering documents that we can use for construction. The things that are funded, like physical elements of the alleyway activation itself by the grant include different pedestrian amenities, traffic calming measures, things like additional benches. And we hope to pursue more grant funding later to fund additional elements of the project. And we'll be able to use the plans that the Project Prime creates in order to pursue those additional grant funds. We created a RFP for this position, which will also oversee the construction management. So the RFP focused on community engagement heavily because we want to make sure that especially business opinions are heard about this plan if they are adjacent to the alleyway and build strongly on previous community engagement that we've done. And we wanted to find a credible planning and design firm as well as construction management experience. We received four bids and we have selected Progressive Companies to work with us on this really exciting project. I think that their credentials and their cost effectiveness and also really their community engagement approach is why we are so excited to work with them. And I also have a member of the Progressive team, I'll welcome up. You can welcome him. Just want to introduce to you as well Lauren here, who works on the Progressive team and will be our point of contact for the grant pending your approval tonight.
What's the total amount?
This grant is approximately $900,000. And we have $150,000 of that to use for the Project Prime position. And they'll be with us through the duration of the project, making sure it all goes smoothly, and overseeing the planning and engagement process as well. So $150,000 is our maximum amount that we can afford for this position. One of the bids we received was well over that. And they're right at the exact figure that we need them to be, and they had this dog as proposal.
All right.
Any other questions? Lauren can also help answer, but feel free to introduce yourself too.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Pedego with Progressive Companies. I'm representing one of many on our Progressive Companies team. As Isabel said, I will be the PM, so I will be the main contact that those in the room or others I will meet and work with. And then we have a full service team of engineers and designers as well, who will be bringing many years of experience to this project.
All right, we can vote on that, please.
Councilman Elsmary?
Yes.
Councilman Hood?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 202516 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 202517, approving construction contract for Hamtramck Stadium restroom project.
Mr. Mayor, I hope to second. Mr. Mayor, I have Tiffany from Hennessy here. I believe she's covering for Ray, who works behind the scene on this, also from Hennessy. And Conrad, who's the Chair of the Parks Conservancy, as you know. Basically put, we have multiple grants for this project. This is the first of several that we finally made, was able to bring to fruition, to get bid it out. And of the three contractors that bid, CNS Construction Management had the lowest bid. And hopefully, we can get the bathrooms going. But you will see some more contracts come before you, hopefully pretty soon, if these federal grant regulations ever get pushed through. Got any more?
So, yeah, this started a few years ago when we worked with, certain Councilman Rafai was at one of these meetings and stuff. They've gone through extensive changes and approvals to DNR and SHPO, the state historic preservation office. These approvals have been, the modifications have approved, so the grants have been, they almost really so do this with the, for doing a bid and everything else. We had the one bid with CNS Construction that Hennessy is. As Max mentioned, Tom Havitz, the director, and Ray from Hennessy were the ones majorly working on this and can tell you a lot more, which unfortunately could not make it to this meeting today. So we are working on, it's a multi-stage process. It's the first of many improvements with the restrooms, the theme spot, concession stand, ticket booth, and a historical baseball section for the Detroit Stars. Anything else to be added to this one. There'll also be added a different parking lot and other field improvements and other building improvements. But that's the majority of this. Is there anything you'd like to add there?
Yeah, so I guess we did have three bids in total with CNS as the low bid. This is being funded through the DNR trust fund with HUD matching funds.
It's going to be a tricky season over there between this, the parking lots, the roads, and everything else going on. There's major construction in that park this year. And also trying to manage the baseball season as well, but it's still going to be playing.
You mentioned you are the chair. I thought Tom was the chair.
He's the executive director, the chairman of the board.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
I'm here because he could not make it.
Okay, all right, thanks. All, any questions to them? All right, I guess we can vote.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmary?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Resolution 202517 approved.
Thank you. All right, next one is some of Mary's favorite. Resolution 2025-18, to concur with award of the 2025 alleys state earmark grant, engineering, design, and bidding.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, myself and the subcommittee worked long into the night to finally get these organized. And I have Tiffany from Hennessy before you to begin the process with Hennessy getting them prepared.
So we turned in a bid or a proposal to do the topographic survey and engineering design for $71,160 for the first nine alleys that Max and the subcommittee agreed on. So depending on approval today, we'll get started on that right away. So we can get alleys to charge at this season.
That's nine alleys. That never happened in history, Hamtramck, to do the last ones. So that's it. If I ask which alleys?
There was a long time.
They are listed in there. You don't have to, don't have, oh, okay.
Alley west of Joseph Compo between Andrews and Grayling. Alley east of Joseph Compo between Roosevelt and Jacob. Alley south of Jacob between Joseph Compo and Gallagher. Alley north of Goodson between Joseph Compo and Gallagher to Keyworth Stadium. Alley north of Miller between Conant and City Limits. Alley east of Conant between Dorothy and Miller. Alley east of Conant between Oliver and Vincent. Alley east of Conant between Jacob and Hanley. Alley west of Conant...
No, you said east, it's west.
Yeah, it should be west.
I'm sorry. Number eight.
Okay.
West is the start of it.
Sorry about that. And then the last was alley west of Conant between Hanley and Lehman. But I also want to note that this isn't it. We have another grant coming in that we just haven't got yet that hopefully we'll get up another slew of alleys that the subcommittee agreed upon.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, quite nice to you. Go ahead.
Just to speak on behalf of my colleagues in the subcommittee. Actually, to inform everybody, there's 21 alleys. I'll say 99% will get it done. This is the first nine alleys. Most of that happens, we did, you know, chose that are actually commercial and residential. Most of them are, you know, kind of hit both sides, residential and commercial. We're starting with the ninth, and then hopefully after that, we have the grant, like you said. And we're doing a real huge alley that's going to be on, from Copperinter to, on Tom Conant. From Copperinter all the way to...
It would be the west Conant from Joseph, from Kniff to Kessmer.
And that's between, also, it's a big alley. So it's, and this will be in the next phase. So we, you know, we did come to, was like the city manager said, we, it was a night meeting and we're able to agree on the alley, so.
Well, that's good, Mr. Mayor, that's good. But I was in the Hamtramck High School alley yesterday. It's a nightmare to park over there to go behind these. I think if you're looking at the business, this is important too, and it's our key strike. And they have their computer fixings, whatever, you know. Department on this side, I went to my niece's computer to exchange. It's a really horrible situation that side too, so.
Councilman, the next wave does have some of those Kniff alleys. I don't remember if that one specifically, but certainly there's at least two in that stretch on there.
All right, thank you for that. All right, thank you. All right, any questions? All right, go ahead and vote.
Councilman Hood?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 202518 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 202519, approving the purchase of a drone package for the police department.
Motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have our deputy chief here and investigator in check who put this presentation together. It was brought before this council prior. We did call the council about bringing it back, and it seemed like it was positive now. and it seemed like it was positive now. And I will also note that this is out of narcotics funding, this is not a general fund purchase. These funds cannot be used for anything else other than police department funds, period. Good evening, Honorable Counsel and Mr. Mayor, as well as guests in the audience. There are some misconceptions from the initial presentation of this package that was submitted. I wish some of the people in the audience would have stayed to hear some of the actual pros of this proposal. As of right now, just as if the law enforcement agency were to deploy new vehicles, new traffic vehicles, like the fire department deployed a new fire engine that they submitted for for grant funding. Before we can submit an actual package and deploy a piece of equipment, or a piece of technology or policy, we have to create a program. And so that's like, the one guest had said, the Department and the Chief had created a drone program, doesn't mean we have the device yet, as we all know, because it hasn't been approved yet. So, part of the Chief's four Ts of technology transparency, trust, and training, two of those, with technology and trust, is to be able to trust this law enforcement agency, to be able to have and effectuate some of the law enforcement activities in a highly dense populated area. There's three events recently that we'd like to quickly draw your attention to, where this greatly would impact. Some people have misconceptions, like the law enforcement agency is gonna be spying in backyards. Absolutely not, we don't have manpower to do that. Right now in the midnight shift, without talking about our operational tactics and things like that, we have roughly two patrol cars on the road, because of budgetary and how our city is staffed. And so, just two weeks ago, we had a stolen vehicle that ended up in the east side around Ellery and Belmont area, and it was in an alley. We had five juveniles that fled on foot. The only recourse, or the only additional support I should say, was for a command officer, a sergeant, to deploy from the station. At that point, with three points of contact, we don't even have enough to control containment. So we create a perimeter, so we can go looking. I actually was in the city as well, offering a fourth position, we had five juveniles running. What would have been more practical is to have the sergeant in the station deploy that drone, and through the thermal imaging and night vision, be able to track those five individuals down, and deploy the officers more safely and efficiently, and apprehend them. We had a sergeant that was performing traffic on Nagel Street, just north of Kniff. He pulled a very serious driver over the head, substantial, substantial felony warrants out of multiple states, multiple jurisdictions, was a very dangerous individual, he fled on foot. We were looking for that person for almost two hours, Deputy Chief was out there, I was out there, matter of fact, most of the department was out there, but because of the dense populated houses in our city, the drone would be most practical and safest to deploy, especially chasing such a person like that. The last area where it's more practical, we know that auto thefts are a serious issue in Detroit, and traffic in Detroit surrounds us, right? But we know our vehicles are ending up in these chop shops, when they're stolen here, and then being shipped out and everything else. Some are recovered, but a lot of them are being taken. So, part of this drone program allows us to be able to utilize that with our task force officers into these other areas. Not only the narcotics officer, that's assigned to the DEA, but myself and other agencies to be able to do this. We know that certain agencies have drones, Detroit has many, Warren has eight, the Gross Points have them, Livonia has them, Dearborn has them. Most agencies have a drone, and there's a much, much substantial benefit for having this. Now we say vision with value, the value, we can see that it's definitely there, and then it comes to the cost. The cost, as we know that we've already presented, I prepared a follow-up to some of the presentations that you should all have in your emails for that presentation, but as we look at what the most impactful thing, like the city, I'd like to resonate with the City Manager said, is that it's zero, and also to touch base on one of the public comments from an email, there's zero budgetary effect from a general budget line item. This is straight narcotic forfeiture money, and by utilizing of those funds, you know, we're on track to still recoup substantial narcotic monies coming in for the next 12 to 24 months. So even though utilizing this money, we're still on track to still capture substantial, tens of, tens of, tens of thousands more. So, this money can only be used for specific parts and pieces, and I know that Deputy Chief can resonate on a lot of the history with the use of those funds and what's benefited the Department of the residents, but we would ask, and greatly ask for you to approve this, so that we can effectively apprehend and more proactively respond to some of these serious situations, because I think the council, what we understand initially from the Chief discussing with this council, was there was maybe some misunderstanding, because the initial presentation did not say narcotic forfeiture funds. Now that you know it's narcotic forfeiture funds, we're asking for that resolution to pass.
I think the biggest thing for me, for the community and the police, is safety, safety and safety, all right? That's all we're using it for, we're not spying on anyone, but when you have a guy with a gun that fled on the traffic stop, you're, it's dark, you're going there, the drone comes over top, you can set up on the person, for larger events like the festival, right? We're not spying anyone, but when you have that many people, you get the drone on the air, somebody wants to do something wrong, you get ahead of it. So strictly, the only reason we want this is for the safety of our officers and the safety of the residents. I mean, it's, comes in handy a lot of times that, something, technology's there to protect us and to protect the residents, so there is no other reason, I can promise you, by our, per our policy that we're gonna develop, there will be no spying on any residents. Just keep that in mind, I know that's a big concern with Big Brother, but I'm telling you, it's gonna be used for safety of the residents and the police officers, which is very important to the, for all of us, I would hope.
Now, as the city also goes to benefit, one last bit of information that we have, this particular drone is not your average DJI, like we see in a retail consumer shop scenario. In talking with the City Building Department and everything else, this drone actually has not only thermal imaging, but night vision capabilities simultaneously. The thermal imaging was actually a little bit of a perk to City Building Department, because, well, hey, if City Hall has a roof leak, are we able to see the thermometry differences between temperature of where moisture may be trapped in our City Hall building? Yes, it can. So, a lot of cities are utilizing those law enforcement tools, if you will, for its own purpose and redeploying. I know Warren does it as well, like I said, they're a much larger city, they have eight drones, but it's something that we can utilize for a safe piece of property as well, and we graciously ask that you approve this resolution.
Mr. Chair, go ahead. I think the last time we denied it was because of the money, we know where the money from, and just the comments that we were getting from residents, again, oh, you're gonna spy on us. So that was an issue that we had with, so it was a really, we knew where the money was coming from. It was from narcotic, wasn't from the general fund. The main concern like today, you heard two comments, it's, you know, our department might spy on, you know, on residents, especially now what's going on with ICE being around, so that kind of, but I'm glad that nobody's here, and I'm fine with that, so.
Yeah, I think that, and to answer Councilman, your question regarding ICE, I think the Chief has well put out a communication piece relative that ICE is ICE, and they're gonna do what they're gonna do, and that, you know, they kind of do what they need to do, we do not have any part or any active investigations with that, but as well with the policy that the Chief has instituted, there is no spying. You know, there are reasonable expectation of privacy. This is in response to serious law enforcement actions, and that's the intent of this. And I know the Chief really wanted to be here today to actually help present this, because he's very passionate about this piece of technology. He had surgery, he is recovering at home, and actually, matter of fact, his dad flew in from New York to actually be with him and see the Councilman and see who's here, so he wants to, the Chief wanted to extend his apologies for not being here today, but he is recovering.
Are you sure his dad is not the one that's supposed to present?
We would gladly welcome him.
So, the concern for some people, that it would be used for entertainment and some events, that's what I heard from some people. So, you confirm that it would be only used for serious emergency actions for the city?
Or big events, like to help the city, you know, because it's highest in Arizona, you know, if you have, like the festival, for example, right? Flying it over, we can't see if somebody comes on the outside, has a gun, or anything else, so the biggest thing is, I can promise you, per our policy, is if you're not committing a crime, you don't have to worry about it, because it will not be, we will absolutely not, you know, if you're committing a crime, sure, we're gonna spy you, because we wanna catch you, right? And that's the point of it. But if you are a law-abiding citizen, that is 100% gonna be against any policy we have of anything like that, so that's, I can promise you that.
So, I saw some video posted by, I think Dearborn Police, while using this drone in action, and it was very, very useful and powerful, I mean, honestly, they told them so much to accomplish their goal. And if all the cities has it, have it, you know, I don't know, maybe we can just give it a try, it's something else.
And Mr. Mayor, to echo just on that point exactly, we know that social media is pretty lively, right? We haven't seen anything in the social media in southeastern Michigan about any department's spying on residents, or for that matter. So, there's, it's very, very strict, the prosecutor's office would be looked upon that very unhighly, you know, several other federal agencies would not look upon that highly, and obviously neither with this, you know, body here. So, you know, it's a very useful tool that can be lifesaving, like we said before in the first presentation, lost children as well, that can deploy much faster in the way of gathering data from an overhead perspective, rather than going door to door in a dense populated city, so. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, go ahead. I'm sorry. Shenanigans of the $20,000 drone will not be tolerated, it's the quickest way for disciplinary and termination actions. This is here to aid the police in serious events, large events such as the festival, to have eyes in the sky, to be able to keep a good eye on what's going on and keep things safe. This is not for funniness, by all means.
Councilman, yes, now, as we, David, them shy, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, as he mentioned, trust. So I think this is the most, like, issue in our community, nobody's trusting that this is not gonna be used for anything else. So I don't know, how can we promote people or make them understand that this is gonna be not used in anything else? Even somebody, I was okay with it, I had discussion with Max, but I did those survey on Facebook, but I called some people who are asking, 10 out of 10s, no. So, some people have been making fun, they said the old sentence, to see is our roof is leaking or not, that's unsent the code enforcement issue ticket. So that's kinds of fearness is working on the community, that's the biggest thing, I mean.
I think Big Brother is, anytime there's change, right? No matter what we do, in, with technology, I mean, even growing up as a police officer, we didn't have the technology we had, and when we changed, I didn't want it, because change is tough, and, but I can only, we can only show you about what our actions are, and I can promise you, per our policies and procedures, and it's.
Shortly on patrol car, how about if we transferred this one to buy another patrol car?
So, in a patrol car app, you know, in a, could you purchase a patrol car? Yes, you could. We have patrol cars already that have been purchased. What's that?
Up for that price?
Well, correct, and then there's certain stipulations, so if we're talking about allocating specific dollars, these dollars are not to be used for that particular function, there's certain stipulations that we're able to utilize for. So remember, you know, we have, we have attachment to the auto theft task force, our vehicles are going into bump shops. In those particular cases, we have search warrants, we have things that are able to help deploy. We have an officer assigned to the Drug Enforcement Agency. Not only can that team utilize this piece of technology that we're benefiting in those monies from, as well. So, there's multiple, multiple benefits aside, you know, the response to a foot chase, a response to a serious incident, is really secondary. When we're looking at responding to the council's request to look at auto thefts, look at narcotic activity from the PFS Institute that we partner with and everything else, these are the types of situations that we're utilizing, these pieces of technology. Just as, you know, technology evolved, we didn't have body cameras before, right? Officers did not want body cameras, but why? The city wanted it, the public trust wanted it. We need a piece of technology now to be able to further serve the people of the city, because they're saying, why are people, you know, you hear on social media, officers were running through the yards chasing somebody. Yes, we were, and it's such densely populated, and with fencing and things like that, you get a lot of these kids that are doing that. We could deploy a drone and respond much quicker, so. Councilman, to respond to your question real quick, and then we're gonna wrap this up and let you guys get to your questions. I think most people don't realize, the departments in the cities they live in already all have these. I mean, if you take a survey of Metro Detroit, I would bet you would find that most jurisdictions that can already do. I mean, Warren has eight, Dearborn has them, I mean, I bet the residents don't even realize it, so, and they're there, no one's having a problem with it, for things they actually need it for.
One last question, how far does it go?
So, it can go, so with cellular technology, this is a different type of drone, it has a cellular package, it can go up to six miles.
Oh, man.
Unlike some others, and we can go without line of sight because of the technology, unlike regular consumer.
Very rapidly.
Yeah, very quickly, yeah, yeah, it's pretty far.
I was hoping it goes farther than that, but.
We're 2.2 square miles, so we're treading pretty far.
So we're being only one, or?
Just one, just one, go.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One, because one people already put their concern about the agents to recruit. A lot of people had the last time, a lot of people had a concern, they don't want to lose their privacy. People thought it is their, it broke their privacy, and they don't have any privacy. How are you gonna confirm if people are gonna be, come up their privacy, what are you gonna do the next time?
Well, for one, there won't be any, and we're gonna put it in policies and procedures, and like we said, I can tell you all we want, and you guys can say, and even if we show our actions, people are gonna still say it's privacy, it's technology, but the only way we can do is by action, and I can guarantee, if you're not committing a crime, you don't have to worry about a drone, this is not anything using, like he brought up, it is a crime. If we use it for anything else, we will be arrested ourselves, okay? The prosecutor's office, the federal government, so people get scared, but I can tell you that we cannot use it that way, but I don't wanna go to jail, right? None of us want, we want, it's for safety, safety and safety, and that's the bottom line of this all, but.
Councilman, also remember that this is a drone, so it's gonna be flying over the rooftops and over the treetops, it's not gonna be zooming in and out of people's backyards. Realistically speaking, if someone was standing on the street with a camera or binoculars, they could probably see in someone's window better than they could actually the drone. The drone's looking down, not in.
Again, there's some social media activists who have drones, and they're already using it, so you know, we can't stop them. Like, I know some of my friends, they have drones, and they use them, they make good videos for the, for the city, so these are civilian drones that we cannot stop, and they have, there's no regulations, you know, to tell them, don't fly it here or there. But for this, if they are gonna follow some regulations, use it only during emergency situations, you know, I think it's worth trying, you know, especially since most of the cities around us already using it. I saw one, one in action for Dearborn Police, and it was powerful, how it helped them to track the criminal. So, I mean, to me, I think we can give it a try, if there are any issues, you know, regarding ICE, I don't think they will come to our city, I mean, we have no illegal immigrants here, well, we shouldn't worry about that, I mean, you know?
I think if ICE came, they'd have their own technology and do what they wanna do, but that's ICE, so.
Also, with regards to the drone, people worried about their backyard, there's certain rules about, you need a warrant, surveil someone in their own home, there's technical exceptions to it, I'm not gonna get into them, but there is a certain amount of privacy that's built into the law already. So if somebody is doing something in their backyard, and the drone sees them, they don't have a warrant to see them, and it's in a certain spot of their backyard, that's, then they could probably challenge that in court. So people shouldn't worry too much about it, if it's in a chase or something like that, that's different, you know?
So you're in a difficult situation, again, all desperately want it, and community doesn't want it. I don't know what to do, how to deal with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll do great first. Any other discussion, or are we ready to vote?
We're ready.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes. Well, I'm worried about our police chief, he's, he's very passionate about it, and he may take tough decisions.
May I, if you don't mind, if that's okay?
I don't think we are allowed to have, but there's a, you know, section for the comments.
Comment, it's just covered, yeah.
Yeah, in a little bit, so you can. All right, since you guys make man strength that it's gonna use only for criminals, not for anything any activated, I'll say yes.
Huh?
She said yes.
Oh, yes, I apologize, okay. Councilman Elsmieri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Nafi?
Yes, and my DJI is better.
Resolution 2025-19 approved.
All right, thank you, thank you. I think that the police chief will be happy. We didn't want to disappoint the public.
Well, that's why he brought his dad here.
All right, the next one is, resolution 2025-20, approving the purchase of new dispatch console for the Hankook Police Department. console for the Hankar Police Department.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Deputy Chief here to speak on this. It is a considerable investment, but absolutely necessary. Our current equipment has reached its end of life. It's still, Deputy Chief, 120 days out from installation, right?
Yeah, I believe it's, they start right away, they could be done within 90 days, which is pretty crucial because we're at the point now when stuff goes down, they can't even find parts, so for.
Not that the public is in jeopardy, by all means, I want to reiterate that, but it is still something that needs to be upgraded. And I will also mention too that we are really quickly exploring the option of, since we have to do this investment and rewire everything, redoing the dispatch and potentially the inside of City Hall, the entranceway as well. So we're going to try and get it all done one shot with this, which we would have to bring back to at a later date. But if we can at least get this going now, gets the timeline going for the order of the equipment.
Good thing about this, we could go through it all, but it's a 10-year, 10 years with the technology. You saw what's $35,000 a year, but when you go 10 years with any technology, it is a positive thing because, you know, they, you know, it covers everything, so it's going to cover us for the next minimum of 10 years, hopefully longer. There was other options, but they were a lot more expensive. And the timeline was, you know, if you went with the other one, it could have been a year before they even got them in. So I think there was proposal for seven years and 10. It's my opinion that for the extra $45,000, I think it's, to get that extra three years would be, you know, to me, that's the better option that we would have for the city. This would be coordinated with all the new radios, the programming, they're switching a bunch of stuff over with Detroit, they'll do all that for us. So state of the art everything for coming up. So, and like the city manager said, it's very important that we've been, you know, going back and forth, but I don't want to have it, not take the proactive measures and then something happen and then we're scrambling, so.
So would we still go, go through the Detroit dispatch system or no, once someone called?
No, and I don't, I think we went through that most of the time. I think they've changed most of it, should be coming through us still, but you're still going to have some, that doesn't have anything to do with that, the calls are through the phone system, sorry. So, yeah, I don't think that has anything to do with this. This is just calls coming in, the dispatch, clarity, communicating with our officers through the radio, different channels going down. We had, you know, a channel would go down and then we have to scramble to find, you know, get somebody in, stuff like that.
And it's out of the?
It's out of the, yes, out of the narcotic, correct.
All right, any questions or concerns?
Well, just answer to echo to your, where I live, because I'm in the border of Detroit, you know, when I call, like last time I come from my brother, we needed EMS, it took us to Detroit. And it's funny, Detroit put me on hold. So, and then I actually had to dial dispatch number to get EMS, and even though that took a while. So, so I don't know in the middle of the city how it works, but when I called, usually it goes because I'm in the border of Detroit.
It used to be with, I got, it would be, used to be with the cell phones, all of them went to Detroit. But now they came in with the new technology, they, a lot of them now do come to Hamtramck, but if it's right on the border, it might catch Detroit. And then obviously they should transfer them there, but with the new, since we switched over, I believe in the middle of the city, the cell phones now are being routed through our 911 system, so.
And then also, I know, I know what's the system is, for our viewers, if you can explain what it is, what's with the system for? So they understand.
The dispatch council system? Yeah, so when a call gets in, you know, it's basically a new radio system, basically. You know, I'm not very good with technology, but all the wiring and hardware, you know, so it communicates with the officers, they come in, they take, the dispatchers will take the call, they'll put it out to the officers, if they need to communicate with another agency, Mission State Police Detroit, they can transfer over to that. So it's basically how the backbone of the police department is the call takers, right? You don't have any of that, you can't have a function of a police, because it gives all the information to the police officers. So it's basically a new dispatch system for if you watch, you know, it's not the same as TV, but they're taking the calls, sending out to the officers, communication with different agencies and stuff like that.
All right. Councilman Abu Musa, we're about to vote. We need to vote later. All right.
He told Councilman Samiri to vote for him.
Yes.
You ready to vote? Councilman Abu Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-20 approved.
Thank you. All right, next one is the resolution 2025-21 authorizing to sell city properties by public silent auction.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Isabel to discuss this, but just a quick overview. First of all, CED is busy. Second, as you all know, we, we still have a bunch of lots in, after years of trying to market them and sell them, I think we've pretty much reached our limit at this point. It's, it's time to push them off and let someone else maintain them and spend the money. Isabel, if you want to take it tonight?
So this resolution before you this evening is to approve CED and other city staff to proceed with a silent auction of 26 properties, most of which are the remaining lots that didn't sell through the lot sale programs. We offered all of these as the residential lotsill properties and then also as side lots directly to people who, if applicable, lived right next to the lots without a development agreement required, but if they wanted to expand their yard. And we had some people take them, take us up on that and some did not. So this auction, we proceed with what's left as well as a foreclosure property, an actual home that we received from the county in 2024. It'll be a silent auction again, and this year we will have a $500 deposit submitted with the bids for the properties. And the first possible date conditioned on your approval, of course, that people can submit bids to the city clerk's office is March 10th at 8:00 a.m., and we would open the bids and evaluate them on March 31st at 10 o'clock. I also just want to note that for people who aren't physically here today and interested, I have copies of the application also conditioned upon your approval tonight. Any questions for me?
So March 10th, only one day to submit the, Mr. Mayor, is it okay? Yeah, go on. March 10th is the only day to, so they have till March 31st.
Right, so the first day that you can submit is the 10th, beginning at 8:00 a.m., and the last day that you can submit is the 31st. And we're opening bids at 10 o'clock on that day, so I would not recommend.
Would that be the Eid Day?
Not really, but.
Yeah, that's going to be a difficult.
Yeah, I would not recommend that you, you know, submit on the 31st, you have to get it in before we open the bids.
You have two and a half weeks, three weeks to submit it, you don't have to submit.
They have to be available.
No, no, no. Nope.
Nope, so we, we do ask that, you know, the people who, who receive the winning bid, who are selected.
How many? 26, right?
26. 26 lots.
So one other question, so if somebody listed a lot, it has to be a primary residence or they can do it as an investment?
Auction.
Anybody?
Yeah, we do not have the residence requirement in, in this auction. It was in a previous auction.
Right, that's right.
Which consisted of homes, not.
So you said there is a foreclosure homes too?
Well, there is one home.
There's one home, yes. Yes.
We didn't single it out.
You can see the parcel list in the application that I attached to the agenda item. So 25 lots, one foreclosed home.
All right, let's get to the vote.
Samiri Enterprises.
Samiri is going to take them all.
I'm going to compete.
He's ready.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-21 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 2025-22 approving acceptance of the fiscal year 2025 state earmark for the development of a new facility for public safety, public works and parks and recreation.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is an easy one, free money from the state. This is one of the ones that state rep helped facilitate before he left office, and it will be for the development of our new DPW facility. However, we still do need more money for this, so if we can get some political pull, maybe in Washington, to help with that, it would be greatly appreciated.
That's why we went to Washington last time. So, okay, well, thank you, that's $2 million, right? That's a lot of money.
Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-22 approved.
Thank you. Last one is resolution 2025-23 approving acceptance of the fiscal year 2025 state earmark for the reconstruction and improvement of parking lots and infrastructure at Hamtramck Stadium.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, also same situation, $2 million from our outgoing state rep. Very, very thankful for this. This is going to allow us to redo all the parking lots and the roadway going into Veterans Park. It's going to be a major renovation for that park.
Well, thank you, and thanks to the state rep, we, I mean, we always have to thank everyone who works as, who works with us as a team to help this community and to bring resources for our city. So any discussion for this one? All right, go ahead.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-23 approved.
Thank you. All right, with that, we come to the end of our new business for tonight. Move to the reports. I'll start with my report, which I, I don't have much to say. I would like to thank everyone who attended tonight's meeting, and we appreciate all your input, you know, and opinions. We, we take everything into consideration, we do not disregard any suggestions or opinions. So, I mean, we always encourage community engagement, you know, we don't take things personally when someone criticizes us, that's, that's how, you know, public services, we, we took this rule and we expect to be criticized, we expect to make mistakes, and so we are, you know, we, we welcome any constructive criticism from anyone. We don't take things personally, we call people to engage, to help our community, to run for public offices. We have an opportunity now, you know, for the new election, we have three new city council seats up for reelection. We have the mayor's seat that's up for reelection, and I welcome anyone to run, compete. I mean, so far, running on a post, hopefully it stays like that. But there, you know, we, we still have almost two months, right, until the end of the registration, so things may change.
Well, isn't right now, you're not running at all.
Oh, yeah, I have announced on, on, on social media that I will. And the unexpected thing was, you know, an hour later, President Trump called me after I posted this, and we talked about running, and he said, that's a good thing. I asked him to accommodate my new appointment at the White House in a way that I can go back and forth and, and serve as the mayor. He asked me about the system that we have, Star Ahmed Shavadine, I answered them that it's, it's a part-time job, but it's a full-time commitment. I get involved almost in everything, but I don't have to be physically in the, you know, in the city hall every day. And he said, okay, if that's the case, he told the team around him to accommodate my request. As of now, there's three, three options for me to choose from. We still discuss with the team all the pros and cons, and, and then I'll, soon I'll make up my mind and I'll choose, and then that will be reflected on, on running as the mayor, we will see. So I have received some questions from the media about the rule. As of now, nothing is, is being confirmed, but it's still on the table for discussion, and hopefully soon I will announce and it will be public. And then, you know, we, we will make sure that this election will be fair, transparent, and, and hopefully many people will run for all the available seats, city council and mayor. And with that, I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank everyone again for joining us tonight, and we move to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight. Also, I want to welcome our chief's father, who is here in our council, and I wish our chief will feel better. And also, I'm glad that the mayor did actually said that he's going to run. Hopefully, you're able to work in the White House and also, you know, still be our mayor, and hopefully, if we have $4 million of grants, hopefully we get more from you for our city. Again, I want to thank our public works employees for doing a great job, doing the snowplow. You know, I got so many calls from our residents, they were like, you know, it's.
They appreciated pizza.
Oh, that's fine, well, they deserve it, so. They were all surprised, they were like, you know, we haven't seen these kind of services since we've been living here, so I'm happy that we are providing these services to our residents. And about the email, you know, I don't live in the city, at least the community know where I live, that's what, you know, that's what matters to me. So have a good night, be safe. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now we move to the city council members' report, who would like to start, if there's any. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, audience, thank you, everyone. This is the last meeting before Ramadan, so it's Ramadan Kareem to Muslims, they're in the past for 30 days. Quick question to Max, what is the, our elevator getting fixed?
What is it?
The elevator, the elevator.
There's, we got the parts that we were waiting a long time for, but unfortunately, they did not fix it, so now there's more parts in order. I don't have a determined time, I actually thought it would have been fixed quite some time ago, but they're just struggling with it. The 100-year-old elevator is not cooperating at all.
Can we replace whole thing?
Well, we, we did, council did vote to actually replace the whole thing. That was probably almost a year ago at this point, but it was like a year and a half, two years wait for it to be built, so the rate we're going, the new one might come in before we get this one going. It's actually, we're very thankful that council approved the purchase of the new one previously because we'd have been in a world of hurt even more. As it stands right now, anyone with a disability, we are sending them to the police department, and police department's been shuttling, shuttling up and down the staircase as necessary, but it is still very inconvenient.
I'm sorry, taking them up their elevator, not the staircase.
That's what I meant, thank you.
How are things? I just want to know, because many people, when they visit city hall, they say, and they ask about, and maybe sometimes some people make criticism for it, that what's going on at the city hall. So thank you, and nothing else, thank you, good night to everyone.
We also sign on there that they.
Thank you.
I know, I.
Good evening, the people who come and join with us in this, and who join with the media. Thank you very much, mayor, city manager, police chief, a police officer. Last Friday night, we celebrated International Mother Language Day on the city hall, still the Chahid Minar in the city hall. Since 2014, I had a great opportunity to work with our former mayor Karen Maske. I became a first elected official, so I approached the Chahid Minar and International Mother Language Day to celebrate in the city hall, and then we approved. From that day, I still sit in the pramik, celebrating International Mother Language Day, a lot of organizations coming, joining us. Last night, last time, we had a really bad and cold weather. Every time, the way we celebrating, we approaching a lot of people, we have a little bit less peaceful this time, but thank you, city hall and pramik, thank you, mayor, city manager, police chief, everybody joining us and enjoy this event. Finally, next week, we are getting the Muslim people, I'm Muslim, coming in the whole world, here and abroad, we are celebrating Ramadan Kareem, the people who is celebrating Ramadan Kareem. I am with you guys, and last 10 days, I'm positive I'm not wrong, last 10 days of Ramadan, we made meter free in Jazakum, am I right?
Yes. Yes, there, there are provisions for free meters on it. I'd have to consult the contract to see what it is, but there is definitely.
We're going to, we're going to inform you, our community people, our shoppers, buyers and businessmen, business people, I hope last 10 days of the Ramadan, it is a free meter, so enjoy your Ramadan, enjoy your shopping, and see you again, thank you.
I can, it is five, okay, I'll read it. Hamtramck holiday, 12 days leading up to and ending on New Year's Day, 10 days during Ramadan leading up to Eid al-Fitr, and five days leading up to Eid al-Adha, so.
Sorry, thank you. Any more reports, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councillor. Thank you, everyone, thanks for coming. I think our new ground will be a great asset for our police department to, to get things with it. Ramadan, barakat to everyone, we're celebrating International People's Day and June 10th for celebrating, thank you, good night.
Thank you. Any more? All right, I guess we move back to the second round of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ahmad Sadr?
Yeah, I should talk to some non-knowing.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, a friendly question, please don't take things personal. How often you comment in people's page and Facebook?
Not much.
So if, if you comment, that was something very important?
No, but it creates some chaos, you know, some people are not really looking for the, the answer, they just want to create more issues, so you comment and they lead you to a long thread, you don't have time to keep back and forth with them. If it's someone who's asking reasonable question, I would be more than happy to answer.
So you only, sorry, several interrupted, so I want to use the time, run as very straight. So you only comment to something that's very important, right?
If I feel like it.
Okay, I pass a copy from a lawyer, with all due respect, that's not a threat, I'm here for the city, okay? I sit with him, he said, is it regarding that person or is it regarding the city? It's regarding the person. Mr. Mayor, you commenting his way, that threat my life, my daughter, and I'm not taking this, I'm asking you to stop it, I'm asking, Mr. Khalib, you asked him to delete it, he didn't. My daughter was at the school yesterday, okay, and she was in person abused with that. You commenting somebody?
I never commented about you, I commented about my daughter.
It was about me, let's, let's.
It wasn't about you.
I, I can show you, I'm not here to create and, and we can.
And you wrote multiple posts about me that really caused serious threat about me, and I never reacted to that.
Can you mention that?
Yeah, of course, I can mention, but I don't care.
You, you should care, because.
No, I am here because I am a public figure and I will come any comments from anybody, but some of them is nonsense, so I just ignore them completely.
So, so you support?
I never target any of our residents, I, I, whoever, a lot of people who just mentioned me in a picture or something and I'll comment about it or like it, but it doesn't mean that I'm targeting someone.
Sir, you were, you, you were, you know, tagged and then you replied, and that's harmed my kids and my, did you guys got the copy? Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Al-Tahir, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Two minutes, sir.
Yeah, it's going to be a very short time.
No problem.
I just want to say, you guys do an amazing job, actually. We, as you know, New York City, and we hearing a lot of good comments about you guys, you're doing a great job, and we wish you the best until you're doing what you're doing. And that incident regarding the, what I mentioned, incident that happened, Bayruch, what I did that, actually, regarding drones, there was an incident where this person, actually, police were chasing him, he had a gun, and he fled to a top floor building, actually, some floor building, actually. The police were coming into, to the, to the place where he's at, and luckily, the drone captured where he was at the roof. If it wasn't the drone, the police officer's life would have been in jeopardy, not only the police officer, but also the residents. But because of that, they were able to cover themselves to cover and be able at the end to apprehend that person, actually. So that's, that's, that's just actually, but you guys do an amazing job, and wish you the best, keep what you're doing, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I told you you had a presentation.
All right, thanks so much. With that, we come to the enrollment, and it's 9:01 p.m.
A motion? Second, Ken?
Thank you.
Yeah?
Good.
Stop.